How you doing? We're live here, so just be careful.
No, because it doesn't...
Yes, she's on the line now, so we had to go live, so... She's, uh, she's at home. Her husband has a health issue, so she's home with him. No, uh, I thought Stacy. She does everything. Do you know our staff person for the... How did we get so lucky? How did we get so lucky tonight? How did we get so lucky tonight? Is it because it's a nice day and you have nothing to do?
You've got me tonight, that's right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, Chuck and Brian, they've got it.
Um, yes. Uh, after it's... After the, or after the proclamations, before the minutes. No, it's before the roll call, sorry. Right. Well, we have to, we have to, when we call the roll, she answers electronically, so that's why I thought it was before the roll.
Maybe it says after establishing.
Yeah, like, I guess that means looking around.
Well, I know in the minutes, it's listed after the roll call.
After the roll call? Okay, you're in charge. Don't color me? Okay. I will color me. Put up a flag.
It's always good to see you work.
Oh, how are you?
Good to see you. It's always good to see you work.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Uh, welcome H. Wayne Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22. Uh, Madam Clerk, the council mics are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Rigenbach. Councilmember Ruckregel. Councilmember Turner. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, uh, I need to give the council notice, uh, that we received a notice by a member of the Peoria City Council in accordance with rules established in Ordinance Number 16142, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the member to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer, and shall declare the requesting member present. So Councilmember Aikerson has made that request, and, uh, I am seeing, uh, no objections, uh, to her electronic attendance, so we shall, uh, declare that, uh, the requesting member is present. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Councilmember Aikerson?
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, at this time, we'd like to join every, ask everybody to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, we are going to, uh, ask everyone to, uh, keep a special intention in mind for all the folks that are still struggling in, in Texas, as well as, uh, Florida and the other states that have been impacted by Hurricane Irma. Okay, we have, uh, several proclamations, some awards, and also a small business award that we're gonna do this evening. We'll start with the American Red Cross, uh, who is here for the Sound the Alarm Project, if they want to join me in front. Is anybody here from the Red Cross? Okay. In that case, uh, we'll move right along to the Lydia Moss Bradley Award. We'd like to invite, uh, Kim Armstrong and, uh, Councilwoman Jensen to join me. Whereas Bradley University bestows the Lydia Moss Bradley Award to a recipient who has displayed outstanding service to the institution, and whereas in 2017, this award was given to Kim Armstrong, who not only graduated from Bradley University in 1980, but grew up on the tree-lined streets near campus and attended Manuel High School. And whereas the list of Ms. Armstrong's involvement with Bradley is as impressive as her recognition as a Bradley University Centurion in 2007. She's volunteered for the Alumni Center Planning Committee, the Greek Alumni Council, and, as Akai Omega, has been a steadfast supporter, leader, and mentor to many women attending Bradley. Ms. Armstrong's capacity to guide these students through their college experience has resulted in many generations of volunteer leaders around the nation. And whereas Ms. Armstrong's commitment to Bradley is most evident through her association with the title-winning Bradley University Speech Team. As a lifelong supporter of the program that her father developed, Ms. Armstrong has attended Bradley University Speech Team performances, helped raise funds for trips, assisted in organizing the American Forensic Association National Individual Events Tournament, and spent endless hours in her kitchen preparing meals for hungry and very appreciative undergraduate students. And whereas Ms. Armstrong's gifts of time and expertise are not limited to the Hilltop, the entire community has benefited from her volunteerism with the OSF Healthcare Angel Ball, the Public Arts Advisory Commission, Invictus Woods Recovery Home, Sculpture Walk Peoria, and most notably, the Peoria Art Guild's award-winning Fine Art Fair. Now therefore, I, Jamar Dismayr, of the City of Peoria, do hereby congratulate and honor Kim Armstrong on her achievement and her contributions to the City of Peoria and Bradley University. Kim, we almost needed the second page, uh, on the proclamation, but, uh, needless to say, Kim has been such a, a leader in our community for so many years. Uh, it's in her blood because, uh, her father was as well. Uh, we're very honored this evening to, uh, to recognize, uh, Kim, uh, in addition to, uh, her previous recognitions, and we're glad that she was able to join us tonight. Uh, I'd like to ask Councilwoman, uh, Jensen, who brought forward the, uh, the proclamation this evening, to say a couple words before we ask Kim to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I'm thrilled to be here today to be able to honor my friend, Kim Armstrong. I've known Kim from a nut, for a number of years, since we first served on the Peoria Art Guild Board, together maybe fifteen years ago. She's been a mentor to me and a good friend. She's taught me what it means to speak up, speak your mind at meetings, and to stand up and be dedicated to things that you believe in, like the arts community, the Bradley Speech Team, the sorority that she's the, uh, alumni representative of, and everything else she does for Peoria. She's a leader, she's a diamond. She's, we're so lucky to have her here in Peoria. So I congratulate her for receiving this award. Uh, one thing to point out, she's the first woman, I think, to receive both awards from Bradley University. So way to go, Kim. We're so proud to have you here in Peoria and for receiving the, these awards. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and Bradley University, and to my friends and family online, Bradley students here. For many of you, this may be the first time you've ever come to an event that I'm chairing or standing in front of you, and I haven't asked you to volunteer. Twenty years ago, I turned down an opportunity to move to Chicago in no small part due to my passion for this community. At the same time, I felt a responsibility to do what I could do to help make Peoria a better place. I figured if I was staying here, I wanted it to be the best it could be. The same trope holds true for my dedication to Bradley. I wanted to be a mentor and a champion for young women. I understand they still have roadblocks and walls to climb over, their male counterparts take for granted. My goal is to make them believe in themselves just a little bit more than they would have otherwise. I believe we are all obligated to give back and do more than we think we can. Push the envelope when people tell you it can't be done. I hope in some small way, I've inspired a student to have a bit more confidence, motivated a neighbor to say yes when asked to give or to volunteer, and helped inspire someone to try an idea to try to make Peoria or Bradley a better place. Thank you again for this incredible recognition.
Thanks again, Kim. Uh, now we have the, uh, Small Business Award. We'd like to ask, uh, Dr. Demannas and, uh, if his family'd like to join him, uh, it's up to you. Councilman Rigenbach? So in the continuation of the council's presentation of, uh, Small Business Excellence Award, we started doing this, uh, a couple years ago, actually, when the council, uh, chambers was being, uh, remodeled and brought back to, uh, very close to its original, um, historic significance. Uh, we were on the road throughout the community with our meetings, and we decided to take the opportunity to, uh, recognize different businesses throughout the community uh, who deserve special recognition, not just for the businesses that they have, but for their longevity in most cases. Uh, and as we all know how difficult it is, uh, to be in small business these days, uh, our appreciation for their perseverance in, in keeping their, their small businesses going here in Peoria. So, uh, tonight, uh, as we recognize another small business, uh, and it's, uh, as we all know, uh, the, the, uh, special business that cares, uh, for our family pets, and that's, uh, Demannas Animal Hospital. They've been a destination for pet owners on the corner of Wisconsin and Forest Hill for past twenty-five years. Dr. Demannas and his wife, Alyssa, grew up in the area, and Scott's father was, uh, the owner of Demannas Interiors, and he helped pick the location, which used to be the side of the old Weber's Market. Uh, as, as they know, and as we've learned, longevity is key with the staff at Demannas's Animal Hospital. Several of their staff members have worked between twenty and twenty-five years there, caring for, uh, families' pets. They focus mostly on small animals, uh, dogs and cats, but they're also known for providing care to exotic animals, uh, as well as, uh, some more common, maybe snakes, rabbits, and birds. Giving that variety, their, uh, twenty-five full and part-time employees and four doctors on staff are kept very busy. Uh, Dr. Demannas knew that he always wanted to be with animals, and he and his staff generously donate a lot of their time to pause forgiving independence and train, uh, local rescue groups in the area. The Demannas Animal Hospital is truly a family business with Alyssa and Addison working along with Scott, and they're known for their investment in their striking landscape, um, on that corner. And, uh, it provides a respite of beauty with the assortment of zinnias and attractive plants that have been awarded the Orchid Award twice over the past twenty-five years. So that's a, a nice segue on, on our, our next group coming up to talk about the Orchid Awards. People travel to this neighborhood place from as far as Sparland and Henry, and with that kind of loyalty, it's easy to see why Demannas Animal Hospital has won countless awards for their service. So, on behalf of the Peoria City Council and the City of Peoria, um, I'd like to extend our thanks to the Demannas's on their investment in our community, and for all of us who live here that, uh, that love our pets know that we have a very, uh, caring facility, uh, to take them when they, when they need medical attention. Uh, now I'd like to recognize, uh, the council member for which, uh, Demannas's, uh, hospital is in. Councilman Tim Rigenbach is gonna say a few words and present the award to, uh, Dr. Demannas.
Thank you, Mayor. I first became acquainted with Demannas Animal Hospital when my daughter started going to school at Von Steuben, just across the street. And truly, the landscaping that, that place is stunning. The zinnias, the sunflowers, it just, you can't miss it as you're driving down Wisconsin. I got acquainted with Dr. Demannas personally as we were working on the Wisconsin Business Corridor Plan, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure you remember the story that we would go up to the business owners and knock on the door and say, "I'm from the city, uh, we're here to help," and, um, see what kind of reaction we got. And the thing I love most about Dr. Scott Demannas is, you never have to ask him twice what he thinks. He's there with his opinion, good or bad, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, but you'd never walk away from a meeting wondering what he really thinks. And we appreciate that very much. We appreciate the longevity. Dr. Addison, Demannas, we're so excited that you're working with your dad now, and we hope you'll be there another twenty-five years, so... Congratulations, and thank you for all you do for Peoria and its pets.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. I would like to thank my community and Peoria that's been my home forever. It was important when I graduated from veterinary school to, uh, for me, I always knew that eventually, you got a lot of options when you get out of vet school, you can go about anywhere and work your way into practice. But I always knew that I wanted to come home here, and I went to Woodruff, my wife went to Woodruff. She grew up blocks from there, so it's, it was our home, and it was that sense of community and neighbors and family that got a business started when, you know, it's, it's tough, especially in the beginning. So, grown a lot, and I'm really, uh, thankful and grateful for that. Uh, it's weird, twenty-five years later. But, uh, I am honored and glad that I made that decision, and, uh, I hope with Addison's help, uh, that we have twenty-five more years. So, thank you all very, very much.
So on behalf of Mayor Artis and the City Council, we present you the Small Business Excellence Award.
Following on the, the heels of that and that beautiful corner over on, uh, Forest Hill, it's, uh, tonight, uh, is the, the time of year that we, uh, are proud to recognize the Keep Beautiful, um, Peoria Beautiful Iris Awards. Uh, I'm gonna ask our Public Works Director, uh, Scott Reese, to come up. I'd like to ask all the, the folks that, uh, that are receiving awards to come up, uh, and join us. Uh, while they're making their way up, I would like to just, uh, thank you all uh, for the pride that you take in our community, for the investments that you've made uh, to make your homes, uh, and places of business beautiful. Uh, that's what we're striving, uh, to get throughout the whole community. So, uh, we wanna thank you all very much. And now, uh, Director Reese will take it from here.
Uh, Keep Peoria Beautiful has been a, a great partner with the city. When we finished up, uh, the Warehouse District project, uh, they came forward with an idea for us, uh, to work with them, uh, especially on Washington Street, uh, between Liberty and State, and it was an Adopt a Box program. And, and part of that was to work with the businesses in that corridor and sign an agreement where the businesses would, uh, take care of the planter boxes in that area. And, and Keep Peoria Beautiful was a, a key partner in, uh, facilitating that. And they also have a couple cleanup days a year that we work with them and provide material, and they have volunteers come out and, and get those planter boxes, uh, in very good shape. So, uh, for that, we say thank you to Keep Peoria Beautiful, and I'd like to introduce, uh, John Rogers, who is a, uh, committee member for the program.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for the warm wel- welcome. Uh, tonight, it's kind of a special night. Uh, Keep Peoria Beautiful, for those of you who don't know, has been around Peoria for over sixty years. Our primary mission is just to make our town more beautiful. Uh, we do this in several ways, uh, to accomplish this mission. He mentioned, uh, the Great American Cleanup that we do in April, uh, where we go over to Glen Oak School and, and help to pick up the neighborhood and, and coordinate a big cleanup throughout town. Uh, we've got the, a Adopt a Box program that, that's very strong and, and getting stronger every year that he mentioned. Uh, we also do various beautification part, projects that we partner with citizens to, uh, to make their neighborhoods more beautiful. An example would be the, uh, over on Nebraska, uh, the Bio Swale project we did last summer. And then also, what brings us here tonight is we recognize businesses and individuals for their contribution to making Peoria more beautiful as well. Uh, the Orchid Award is, uh, recognizes businesses that, that make their businesses more beautiful, and tonight, we're recognizing the Iris Award winners. And, uh, right now, Tori's gonna mention everybody's name.
Hi, I'm Tori Stoll, and I am the Secretary of Keep Peoria Beautiful. Um, when I announce the winners, if you are present, just go ahead and step forward. Okay, the first winner is Donna Kirby, and her property is at 1219 North Sheridan Road. Then we have David Stotts, and his beautiful home is at 201 West Columbia Terrace. Then we have Jim and Sherri Engelbrecht, and that is 1003 Northeast Perry. Great work. Then we have Nancy Scott at 1128 Fair Oaks Avenue. Okay, Gary and Diana Johnson, and their home is at 927 East Richwoods Boulevard. Dorothy Thornton at 3715 North Linden Avenue, or Lane, my apologies. Then we have Richard and Wilma Brockett, and their home is at 200 East Embert Place. Patricia Peterson, 5506 North Prospect. Um, John and Laura Mayby. Okay, their property is... Okay, their property is 535 East High Point Road. And then Catherine Drys, 6516 North Mount Holly Road. And Mary Harvey at 4904 Deer Meadow Drive. Congratulations to all of our winners.
Thank you, Tori. Before the meeting, Mayor Artis asked if we had a PowerPoint presentations with photographs of everybody's property and to help with the recognition, and we don't right now. But if you'd like to see them, we're going to have a banquet on the 28th of September. Everybody is invited. There's tickets available, and there's sponsorship opportunities available as well. It's September 28th at 5:30 at Luthy Botanical Garden. And if you want more information about it, or if you need to contact people to get tickets or sponsorships, so you can go to keeppeoriabeautiful.com, or no, .org. Yes, sorry. KeepPeoriaBeautiful.org. And there's a link there where you can send an email for inquisition. So thank you so much, and have a great day.
I move to approve the minutes of the special City Council meetings held on August 9, 10, 2017, and August 21, 2017, and the Joint City Council and Town Board Meeting held on August 22, 2017, as printed.
Thank you. That motion is seconded by Councilmember Turner. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first item is a township item. 17-267 is a presentation by township officials regarding the township's response to public Act 100-0107 regarding consolidation of township government.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always nice to see that the officials in Washington, D.C., in this particular case, Springfield, Illinois, are interested in doing so much to help us here in Peoria, Illinois. They have all kinds of suggestions as to how we can do better running our city, some of which are good, but some of which involve, oh, a few more bills being sent our way that haven't been paid before by the citizens of Peoria, the taxpayers of Peoria. And I believe, Mr. Manager, it looks like our deficit just got a little bit deeper because of some of the favors that they're doing for us down in Springfield. The latest thing is possibility of consolidating the township government, and it's a public act that empowers us to take a look at this, and we would be derelict and discharge of our duty if we didn't study this. And in that particular spirit, as your liaison City Council members to the township government, I have asked the Township Corporation Council, John Redling-Schafer, to provide just a brief overview of some of the functions being done by our four township officials who are all here tonight. And then perhaps some of the town trustees would like to weigh in and express some of their thoughts as to whether or not this would be beneficial for us in our role as town trustees, if we would be doing our taxpayers a service by following through with the consolidation or leaving it alone. John?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, fellow township officials. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. It's very important that we first kind of establish where we are tonight. We're here as colleagues. It's very important to realize that it's not confrontational. This is an opportunity for us to do, as you say, to study and look at some initial issues presented by a statute that is now law. Consolidation is a very highly touted buzzword that we hear these days. It's attractive, the idea of efficiency for taxpayers. No one's going to dispute that taxpayers deserve efficiency. And so that's kind of the spirit of what we're doing here tonight. I know it's dubbed a presentation by the officials, but really, I kind of envision this as the opening dialogue, or maybe continued dialogue that's already happened. And I think to piggyback on that, I have to thank the township officials and also city officials and staff who have actually started to look into the various issues. Now, me personally, I was tasked with looking at the statute, the new act. It's effective January 1 of 2018. I'll be honest with you, in front of you, that I've had the clerk hand around is an initial opinion, looking at a lot of the procedural questions. It's marked attorney-client privilege. I apologize for that. It's actually, obviously, fair game. It's been distributed. It's a letter I wrote to Supervisor Abnauer, because I felt it was important that all of us not only look at the procedural questions, but then the practical questions that come to the actual application if a resolution were to be passed, and then a vote were to be taken, and then consolidation begins. I mean, this is a very thorough process, and unfortunately, as you'll see in my letter, it kind of raises more questions than I thought it would in terms of providing notice to residents about the election, in terms of how the vote could actually be handled. But I really feel, and I appreciate, the idea of getting into what the township does and really the core component of this notion that the services of a township are unique. They're not currently offered anywhere else. The township has certain specific obligations under the law. Those obligations are currently being met by the officials you have here, and any idea that we potentially absorb or consolidate has some potential pitfalls that I feel it's our responsibility to share with you. So let's assume those resolutions are passed, a vote occurs, and it's in favor of dissolution. There's a few things that are going to occur. Clearly, at some point, the township would be abolished, but all the rights, powers, duties, assets, responsibilities of that township that goes away would vest in and be assumed by the municipality. But the new law has an important caveat in there. Those powers and rights include the authority to levy property taxes for township purposes in the same manner as the dissolved township without any additional action being required. And we've got to let that sink in a moment. The City of Peoria would step into the place and be responsible for all of those township obligations, all the while keeping and utilizing the existing tax levies, and presumably using those same powers, if it so desires, to raise those levies, because townships can raise their levies, just like a city in different capacities, but it can happen. Secondly, those township officials that you see would cease to hold office. Okay? Now understandably, some of the popular comments you hear about supporting of dissolution or consolidation relates to those salaries of those very officials. But what we overlook a lot of the times is the level of accountability that's offered through the ballot box for those services rendered, and I'll get to those services in a moment, and the fact that actually, if that's a growing concern, the Township Board itself sets the salaries of those officials, including your own, under state law. And then finally, again, you're going to exercise all those duties as municipalities, but as the function of the township. And the township has the authority through not only just the Township Code, but the Public Aid Code and the Property Tax Code, just to name a few. So I'd first start with the office of the supervisor. Again, direct oversight of the budget, but a key component of the supervisor's office relates to general assistance or emergency assistance. That's your Public Aid Code that we're talking about. This is helping the most needy folks that you can imagine, and the townships of Illinois, in addition, obviously, including Peoria, do a magnificent job of treating these people with respect, because maybe they've hit on hard times, and there's a very specialized procedure that has to be followed. And I have to credit Supervisor Abnauer. In addition to learning the ropes fairly quickly, he's actually reaching out to townships around the state to try to modernize and look at ways to make general assistance more efficient. That's one of those services provided by the township not currently provided by the city. So you're looking at not a common argument of duplicate services. It's not the case. But you also have a township clerk, assessor and collector. These are other offices that have done everything they can, and I encourage all of you to come to the budget meeting that's being held on the township side on September 29. These individuals have done their best to demonstrate a budget that has not increased over recent recollection, and they're doing so in a way that I've witnessed personally at that budget committee, going through, figuring out what options are available. And I'd have to say a special note on both the assessor and the collector, because what they have, I mean, an assessor is one of not the only office in Illinois that has to have certain specified training in order to serve. That education and certification relates to this specialized knowledge to provide objective and fair analysis to taxing bodies and to property owners, including the idea of preserving those property owners' right to appeal decisions. These independent services of the assessor in that office allow taxing districts within the township to levy approximately $174 million in property tax dollars in 2016. That was done objectively, and that was done by an elected official that is, can be held accountable at the ballot box, and certainly not a function that's being provided at the city at this time. If you take that and couple it with the township collector, who's developing more efficient plans to collect and distribute those very tax dollars, we're left with this preliminary analysis of, we're troubled to think that consolidation is a benefit and is that efficiency that the taxpayers want. There's undoubtedly a lot to digest. You've got a letter from me, we're all here. You know, the idea of dissolving a township in Illinois, again, on its face may seem attractive to some people. I want to conclude by basically saying both township and city officials and staff should be commended for exploring possibilities on how to best protect the taxpayers. That can be done through intergovernmental agreement or other various methodologies on those topics that maybe are those subjects that are not, in a way, so specific to a township that we wouldn't be introducing something completely new on the city side. We strongly urge you as trustees or as council members, careful continued dialogue on what dissolution and/or consolidation would practically mean. And again, whether we answer your questions tonight, whether we answer, we'll be available anytime to talk with you, because again, this is a collegial dialogue that we're willing to work with you as partners in going forward. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redling-Schafer, and thank you to the other elected township officials that are with us for this beginning of the discussion this evening. It's probably important, and I probably should have said it at the beginning, for the listeners out there, that this is really a beginning, as Mr. Redling-Schafer said, of a conversation that was brought forward proactively by our township elected officials. Because of the conversation that's happening at a state level, the intent is to inform. The Township Board is not making a decision on this tonight. This is informational. It's an opportunity not only for us to potentially ask questions, but also just to inform those that reside within the township. So thank you for that information. Again, no vote is being taken, no action is being taken. At least at this point, no action is being contemplated, but if it is, we want to make sure that everyone has the best information available to make that decision. So with that said, if any members of the township would like to ask a question of Mr. Redling-Schafer or any of the other elected officials, this would be the time to do that. If they have the answer, they'll give it to us. If they don't, they'll get the information that they need and get it back to us quickly. So the floor would be open. Trustee Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank you all for bringing this information forward and acknowledge that you understand that it is our responsibility as elected officials to make sure that we're looking at all areas of government. The city is facing a huge deficit, and the citizen needs to know that there is no stone being unturned to look at where we could have savings. And the fact that you brought this information forward is very educational. So you hit it right on the head when you said it was an academic exercise, because we need to make sure that the citizenry understand the difference between what the city provides and what the township provides, and you were able to delineate that for us tonight. So thank you. Frank, you're doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, I know that you sent over a communication to the council. I don't know if you'd like to make a weigh in on this for tonight as well?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, very briefly, we did just a very cursory financial analysis that just looked at what some of the potential costs and savings might be from the consolidation. The issue is, while the township official salaries would be reduced with the dissolution of the township government, if all of the employees are brought over as city employees with our current benefit load, particularly with retirement costs, that would increase about $80,000. And I think the savings we would see from the township of, the elimination of the township officials would be a savings of about $33,000. So it's not quite dollars for dollars in terms of that. And again, that's a very cursory look that we just put together quickly from the city side.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other, we do have a light here. Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a follow-up, and I'm just reading the memo that you sent out this afternoon right now, that $80,000 per year increase for IMRF rates, is that just for the township, the five or the, how many township employees? Is it six?
It would be for the township employees. It would be, we're assuming that you would have the supervisor's function and the assessor's function coming over as part of the city. So any of those employees that were coming over, you would then be paying at our rate, which is roughly, I think, 15% is what our current IMRF rate is versus the 5% rate that the township is currently paying, which is not a percentage of pay.
So legally, are we required to increase their IMRF benefits if they, I guess, because they'd be city employees?
They would be city employees. You'd have to treat them like all of our other city employees.
And as a follow-up, I understand this is just a cursory analysis. I'm, and I'm not convinced, and maybe we can talk about it more, that you would have to bring every single township employee to the city to do everything that the township does. I mean, I'd like the city to look at that a little bit more closely, exactly what their functions are, their duties are. Is there other current city employees in the clerk's office or in the finance department that could take on some of those functions, or even maybe do dual jobs? So I would like a little bit more in-depth analysis, just because we are facing, as Councilwoman Moore stated, such a big deficit. I think we really need to look at this in more depth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Councilman Grab.
Manager, if you could provide a analog instead of a digital version of your thought process, I know we got that this afternoon. That would be much appreciated. And I think this is the beginning of an interesting discussion. But basically, these functions, if we did this, would be municipalized. And they're functions that have to be performed, and I guess the question is, can they be done more efficiently if we bring them in-house inside the city and dissolve the township governments? So if we could get that in writing, I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And I would move to receive and file unless there are additional questions or comments.
Seeing no other lights, if there's no further discussion on this item, we have a motion to receive and file by a trust- a motion to receive and file by trustee Grab, seconded by trustee Moore. Seeing no further lights or discussion, please cast your ballots. Trustee Akerson.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 17-268 is a request to authorize an auction at the City of Peoria operations and maintenance facility on Dries Lane on Saturday, September 16th, 2017. 17-269 is a request to approve and authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for 60 monthly parking spaces in a city-owned parking facility. 17-270 is a request to award a contract to Illinois Piping Corporation for boiler and domestic hot water heater replacement for the police department headquarters in the low bid amount of $168,760. And 17-271 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a request to concur of George Garib, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items that the council would like to remove from consent this evening? Councilmember Akerson?
No.
Okay. I'm seeing no lights here, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilwoman Ruckregel, seconded by Councilwoman Euler. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Akerson.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're at regular business. 17-272 is a request to receive and file the 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Clifton Larson &amp; Allen LLP, and I believe there is a document that's been handed out on your desk that's in color.
Thank you. Mr. Scroggins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we get started, before I drop off you.
Is that yellow?
Yes, it's yellow.
So I left two packages for you last week in your mailbox. One contained all the audits, the other smaller package contained the audit of the police and fire pension funds. Those will not be presented, they're included in the audit as a component unit, but those are for your information. I just want to do a real quick thank you to my staff for the hard work they put in to get this audit complete, and as well as other departments who helped our auditors as far as grant testing and, and a lot of our road testing and stuff like that. So we do appreciate all the help we get from everybody, and with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Pulley, partner from Clifton Larson &amp; Allen.
Good evening, everybody. Adam Pulley with Clifton Larson &amp; Allen, the principal that was in charge of the external audit for year ended December 31st, 2016. And as Jim alluded to, there are a number of audit opinions that we issued on various reports and issued a couple of letters. So there's a lot of information and a lot of pages of information. I'm going to do my best to keep it brief and at a high level and just go through this document, I believe you have in front of you. So with that said, I'm going to hop to slide two and really just want to point out some of the information or where you could find certain information on the financial statements, the big CAFR there. So page one of the CAFR is where we actually put our audit report, and we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can give, on the financial statements. Within that audit report, it does mention that there are the two pension funds, as well as a foreign fire insurance fund. These audits were performed by other auditors, so we made reference to those other auditors, but they also issued unmodified or clean opinions on those specific funds. Page four is where you'd be able to find the management's discussion and analysis. And honestly, if you were looking for a good place to get a good synopsis of what occurred during the fiscal year, I would recommend that, that would be a good read. That's the place to go. Page 16 is where there would be the government-wide financial statements with a full accrual basis statements. Here you would find that the city's assets plus deferred outflows as of 12/31/16 were $524 million, offset by liabilities plus deferred inflows of $684 million. So as of 12/31, the city was at a net position, a deficit position of $160 million. Page 20 is the fund financial statements. This is on the modified accrual basis. This is probably the figures that you'd be most accustomed to seeing throughout the year. This is where you'd see the financial statements outlined by major fund, as well as a column for all the non-major funds aggregated. The change in the total fund balances for the year was a decrease of $6 million compared to a decrease of $9 million in FY 15. The next three slides, I'm not really going to spend any time on, this is more for reference or just a reminder, kind of a snapshot of the revenue, the total revenues that the city would have collected during 2016 compared to 2015, and any sort of variances of significance, we tried to have a explanation in the bubble there. Slide four is going to be the expenses side, same type of analysis. And slide five is the fund balances as of 12/31/16 compared to 12/31/15 by major fund, as well as the aggregate non-major governmental funds. I am going to jump to slide six then, as far as other financial statements that were issued. There was a TIF report that was issued, as well as a designated zone organization financial statements. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion once again on both of those reports. Slide seven, the single audit report, and as a reminder, this is a report in which we perform testing of compliance with federal grant requirements. We issued once again an unmodified or clean opinion on the single audit. Now, with that said, we did come across two financial statement control findings that are reported in this report. The two material weaknesses that we came across are actually repeats from the prior year audit as well. There were audit adjustments, material audit adjustments that we came across during the audit. Some of them were impacting prior year balances, which I'll touch on a little more shortly. And then the other material weakness we came across was a lack of segregation of duties over the IT software. Generally speaking, there are users in the general ledger system that have access to more financial modules than we would like to see. They should really be limited to those that they need as opposed to having ability to touch other aspects of the modules. Now, I understand that the number of these users is less than what it was in 2015. I mentioned this as a repeat finding, and that there's already efforts being made to correct this, so this is no longer an issue going forward. There were no findings at all over the two major grant programs, the federal programs that we tested, being the community development block grant, as well as the revolving loan fund. Slide eight talks about the management letter. And what this is, this is a thin letter that we would have issued, in fact, I think it might have only been a one-page letter this year. These are items that we come across during the audit that don't rise to the level of a finding. They're not material weaknesses, they're not significant deficiencies, but we came across them, so we thought we would communicate those, and they're really more or less recommendations in case there's opportunities to strengthen controls. So in 22 items tested, we did come, we did come across one item that did not have the appropriate documented approval. And when we were testing some of the census data information, which is sent off to the actuaries to determine the net pension liability and whatnot for pensions, there were some small discrepancies in some of the hiring dates with the personnel files. Nothing that we're overly concerned about, but again, because we came across them, we thought we would communicate that in case there was an opportunity to strengthen controls. The last letter I'll touch on, on slide nine, is the letter to governance. This has some points of information, if there's any new accounting policies that were issued, if there were any significant accounting estimates, which there are, liabilities for compensated absences, for other post-employment benefits, net pension liability, and liabilities related to insurance claims. Those are all within the financial statements, they are considered significant estimates. I mean, there's rationale behind them, obviously, but those are estimates. This letter, you would also be able to find any corrected adjusting entries, any misstatements, as well as any that are uncorrected. The uncorrected ones were not corrected because they were not deemed material to the financial statements. We also make reference in this letter to prior period adjustments from the 2015 financial statements. As we were performing the audit with management, it was determined that there were a few items that were incorrectly reported in 2015 that had been restated so that going forward, these are now, these balances are correct. Lastly, this letter would be our opportunity to communicate to you if there were any problems or disagreements with management during the audit, and I'm happy to say that there were none. And honestly, in fact, I will say that management was very good and professional to work with. You know, this was our first year doing the audit, obviously had been done by another firm for a number of years prior, so we had to come across and ask for various old bond documents, long-term agreements, and that, that can be cumbersome to dig into and pull up for management. So we appreciate their patience with us and our follow-up questions that came along with that. But that is really all I had. I hope that wasn't too quick, tried to be brief and at a high level, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay. I'd like to thank Mr. Pulley and Lindsey from Clifton. I'd also like to thank our finance director and his staff, who really put in a lot of hard time to, to get this done. So are there any, any questions regarding the audit from the council? Councilwoman Akerson.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. I have one question, and I'd like to thank everyone that participated in putting this document together. It happens to be one, one of my favorite ones, and I look forward to its printing and distribution. And I do have some concerns about the timing of its release, and I'm wondering if there could be some sort of explanation as to why the year ends December 31st, and yet we typically get this document in June, and there's been some variation. It has come out in the fall before, and I was just wondering, what can we do to get this document in the first quarter, or is that completely unrealistic?
Well, the audit document is, is due by June 30th, and that would be our goal for next year. And the last year, in the last 18 months through the conversion of the new software, we've had a lot of conversion to do, a lot of creating of statements and learning how to use the system, which has delayed some of our, our reporting. Looking at last year, I think we're two months ahead of where we were last year, so I anticipate being two months ahead next year where I am this year. So our goal has always been to try to get it to you by June 20th, it's due by the end of June 30th. And we've got a much better handle. I mean, we're only 18 months into a system that we're currently basically writing the program in the, in the statements ourselves. So I anticipate next year, this will be much more timely.
May I ask a follow-up question? Director Scroggins, so the expectation is we would have next year's audit by the end of June. So who set that deadline?
The June 30th deadline is set by, I think it's the state's date, that we have to have our reports in by June 30th, or we can file an extension. We set June 20th as the deadline within the contract, but because we weren't able to provide the information to them timely, we can't hold them to that June 20th date.
Okay. What's preventing us, okay, may I ask this, so what is preventing us from producing it faster than that?
Well, the audit doesn't actually start till April 1st, and it takes about weeks to do the audit and then prepare the report. It's about a two-and-a-half-month process.
Okay. All right, just for clarification, because I know that there are some citizens that wonder, and I know that recently there have been questions about city employee salaries, and they question why we are using 2015 numbers. And I know that there are several other council members that would also like to see current fiscal numbers available, you know, as soon as possible. So I appreciate that explanation, and perhaps the council could have a discussion about what we're, and I know we talked about this during the strategic planning session, what are we going to do about this software system that seems to have everybody befuddled? It doesn't seem to be working well if we can't get accurate or timely, I guess accurate's not the right word, timely information posted to the website so that citizens have the information that they are required to have.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Councilwoman Akerson?
No, that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the council? If not, I would accept a motion to receive and file. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilwoman Ruckregel. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilwoman Akerson.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
17-273 is a communication from Councilmember Charles Grab and the city manager with a request to approve a resolution affirming that the City of Peoria desires to advance racial equity in policy practices and culture, and supports the efforts of its citizens and organizations that advocate for inclusion, compassion, and understanding.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Manager Yurik, I thought maybe you could put a bit of a frame on this before I have the opportunity to do the really exciting part, which is to introduce one of our constituents, someone who teaches our children, and I know we've been having a conversation about some of the problems that affect our community, and maybe you could go ahead and just give us a little frame before we get to the resolution itself.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, we've had, as I think everyone is aware, we've had two community conversations on race that were held earlier this year. At those meetings, we talked about trying to define and trying to seek racial equity within our community, and we talked about defining that, and we stated that racial equity meant closing those gaps so that a person's race doesn't predict his or her success while improving outcomes for all. And from those meetings, we've broken into smaller working groups where we're looking at a number of different areas. And really, tonight's resolution that's here in front of you is, is really looking at trying to recognize that both the citizens and organizations have taken a role in playing a part of trying to advance racial equity, and it's really trying to acknowledge that. And that was the, kind of the genesis of where that came from, and I think, Councilman, I'll, I'll turn the floor back over to you to, to let you discuss Ms. Jones, and also we have our, our police chief here as well to talk about some of the efforts that he's been doing.
You know, there was ever a time when we had something percolating from the grassroots up and not coming from city council to the grassroots. This is the time. And I'm so proud to be a councilman for the City of Peoria, and of course, now, Second District, and to see all the great work that's being done by so many of our stakeholders. And being a career educator, I was especially heartened when Lethelda Jones, who is the library manager at Franklin School, came into City Hall and interacted a little bit with our staff, and she ended up getting in touch with her district councilman because she lives in District Two, and the rest is history. And Lethelda Jones, would it be all right for you to come up and make a few comments from your heart as to what motivated you to want this resolution to be brought forward? And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And being the driving force behind this and the impetus behind it.
Wow, that's a lot. As the author of the first resol, as the author of the first draft of this resolution, thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts and to share my process and end results. To Councilman Chuck. To Councilman Chuck Grab, thank you for helping me to see that a chorus of voices does not take away from any single message, but rather it harmonize that voice with other noble cause for freedom and justice. When I drafted this resolution, it was tailored to the concerns many people across the country have about the deaths of black people at the hands of law enforcement. It was and is still my hope that the council openly embrace the sentiment embodied in the slogan of BLM. The challenges to DACA, suppression of voter rights, proposed building of a wall, the ban on Muslims are at a high level, and has dimmed ladies' liberties light. That said, I was pleased to learn after my meeting with Police Chief Mistle and Assistant Chief Snow that some of the goals of BLM movement are akin to the goals of our local police department. Both want body cameras, a user-friendly complaint and complimentary process, culturally aware officers, and the implementation of community policing guidelines as outlined in the Obama administration. I certainly emphasize, empathize with dreamers who feel insecure, members of the LGBTQ community, Muslims who are made to feel like second-class citizens. These are feelings African Americans know all too well, and in a spirit of unity, I don't wish them on anyone. There is no glory in laying claim to exclusive oppression. Throughout this process, I have learned initiatives implemented by our police are being adapted in other cities. Peoria was the first to have the police cadets, and that's being adapted in other places. Our police are presenting with the NAACP at a national convention in Philadelphia. I personally am very proud of the Peoria Police Department, and with my limited dealings with them, have not had any issues with the police department. This is not about placing blame at anyone's feet. So, you say wise resolution. It is to say that our city and our police are in support of the basic core message of BLM, which is the elimination of systematic and racist killings of persons of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Lethelda Jones. I very much appreciate your work on this. This has been in the making for quite some time, and it is particularly pleasing for me to hear about the great works being done by our law enforcement with the youth in our community, and hear about, just directly from you, that a couple of our police officers come in and read to the pupils at Franklin School. Officer Joe Paul Jones, a resident officer of District 2, and in particular, Adrian Aguilar in District 2. This was a wonderful program. And I think the, one of the things that I've observed in the past few years is that it seems like there are just so many divisions tearing apart our society and our social fabric. And I think we need to give others a chance and a break, and a little bit more compassion, understanding. What I see quite often are two boxers getting into a ring, one in one corner and one in the other, and there are people who are just laughing when they see polarization in our society. They want to divide Americans, and that's not what America's all about. We're about coming together and finding common ground and helping one another. So, I'm very proud to bring this resolution forward. She was asked, you know, where do you live? Well, she lives in the Hamilton Park area, so manager and his staff said, well, you need to contact your district councilman because a resolution like this would typically come from a policymaker. Chief, if you could comment a little bit on how you interfaced with this whole process and with Ms. Jones and her experience with our department, I would really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. A few weeks ago, we had an opportunity to sit down with Ms. Jones and kind of outline some of the community efforts, engagement pieces that we have been engaged with for a number of years now. And one of those was the resident officer program, and we kind of outlined what that looks like and what the impact could be to each neighborhood that we were in, and we kind of walked through the quality of life issues that those officers addressed. We also talked, spent some time talking about the school resource officers that were in the high schools every day, and we have the opportunity to sit down with these young men and women that are of high school age and engage in meaningful conversation about positive outcomes when we have interaction. And one of the ideas that actually came from Ms. Jones, and we're very grateful of it, was to produce a pocket-sized laminated card that we could distribute particularly to our youth-age, our high school-age kids that have contact with police officers, not necessarily on a daily level, but every now and then, particularly at car stops. We've got a lot of young drivers out there now, and they need to know what they don't know. They need to know about expectations. They need to know what their rights are. It's the same conversation that I would have with when my daughter was of driving age. It's the exact same conversation we should be having with everyone's children about surviving the encounters, the interactions, and make sure it's a positive in nature, and when it's not, what do you do about it? So, we're in the high schools now doing that, and what's called Respect Peoria, which the kids call Comply and Complain, but it's something that we're going to push a little bit further and issue those cards to area high schools, and it's something that they can keep above their visor, keep in their purse and their wallet, that just when they have a contact with police officers in the future, they know what to expect. So, it was something very positive that we gained from our conversation with Ms. Jones.
And we have a lot of organizations in this community that are trying to move this community forward. Mayor Artis, I remember when I first came on the council, and Councilman Turner, you will too, and we had Mayor Malou. Very frequently, people would come in and say, you know, this glass is half-empty here in Peoria, and you don't do this, and you don't do that. He was very good at reminding us of all the good things that are happening. That does not mean that we have bad things that we don't need to remedy, and we're about the business of doing just that. And some of the organizations that are working hard to make Peoria a better community are included in this resolution, and that would be the NAACP, Black Lives Matter, the Tri- County Urban League, Peoria Proud, Prairie State Legal Services, the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, Interfaith Alliance, the Central United, and we could go on and on and on. We all live in this community. We want to make it better, and I think this has been a great process, not only for the police department, and another way that we can interface more positively with our citizens, but certainly for this councilman and what I've learned from one of my constituents and what she's brought to us tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, if you wanted to add something, and we'll open it up for dialogue with the council.
Why don't we go ahead and get a motion on the floor, and then we'll see if there's any additional discussion. So, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Grab, and seconded by Councilman Turner. From a discussion standpoint, I would just like to add my thanks, as Councilman Grab did to Ms. Jones. This wasn't something that was undertaken lightly, written quickly, and put in front of the council. And as Councilman Grab mentioned, with all the different issues that this nation is facing right now, I think that it was a very thoughtful process, and I appreciate the hard work that you all put into bringing this forward to us this evening. Is there further comments by the council? Councilwoman Aikerson?
I'm ready to vote yes.
Okay. Seeing no lights, then, we have a motion in a second, and I'll ask everyone to please cast their ballots. Councilwoman Aikerson?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks again. Madam Clerk?
17-274 is a request to adopt an ordinance proposing the creation of a Sterling Avenue-Rockwood Road special service area in the city of Peoria and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to put a motion on the floor to approve this. Really, this is just to set the date for the public hearing for November 14th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, does that cover what you were going to say, too? I think, just for the listening public, as Councilmember Montalongo said, the passage of this merely sets the public hearing dates, and the much further discussion on the SSA will happen at that time. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Montalongo to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, or hearing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
17-275 is a request to adopt an ordinance proposing the increase in the sales tax levy of the Westlake Special Service Area and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo?
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, this is just to set the date for the public hearing for November 14th at our city council meeting with that motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing or hearing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
17-276 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2017 amended annual budget utilizing $75,000 in warehouse District TIF funds to renovate office space at 813 Southwest Washington Street for the Peoria Corps.
Is this, Councilmember Moore?
For the purposes of what these funds are to be used for, I'd like to move for approval.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Is there a discussion on this item? Councilman Euler?
I have some questions for the city manager regarding the building. Is it currently being used for anything?
We are currently using the building for storage, and it is the, I'll let, as Director Reese has now come into the building, I'll let him clarify what we're currently using the building for.
If I might ask a few more questions, then, well, you can get into it here. I guess one of the concerns that I have coming from, obviously, a business background is when you've got a big budget deficit, you don't look to turn more buildings on, you look to turn them off. And so, I'm concerned about the impact that this is going to have on water, gas, electric utilities, and overall, is this really the right way to spend money right now when we haven't resolved how we're going to fix an $8 million budget deficit?
So, we currently, we use the building just for some storage of inlet and stuff like that, just in the back, because it's a warehouse building. We do have, it's got a fire suppression sprinkler system in it, and so, we are keeping it minimally heated throughout the year. It's not air-conditioned, but one thing that we are looking for this to do, number one is we're out of space, so we have no place to house up to 30 people for the Peoria Corps project, and so, this gives us a space to house them and train them like we were looking for, and it also gives us, the building is vacant right now. Outside our storage, there's no one there that's on a daily basis, so that kind of gives us eyes on the building daily so we can keep track of it, and also activates the storefront. It's right across, it's in the heart of the warehouse district, right across from Builders' Warehouse, if anybody's familiar with it, and it's, we're doing it just on the ground floor, just looking at finishing off a little, the front part of the building, just to get it activated.
So, what do we expect this to cost to activate the building aside from the renovation costs?
Just the $75,000 to renovate it.
Well, there's obviously going to be more cost to run the utilities in the building. That's my main concern, and have we really exhausted all potential options to address that? And in the notes, it mentions potentially looking at bringing in trailers at Dries Lane. What is the cost of that option?
So, to rent temporary trailers, it'll run about $20,000 a year to have them set up out at Dries Lane, and we would have the cost of running a sewer line to them, which we estimated at about another $15,000, and we would still have the additional electricity costs on there. One thing we're doing to minimize, all we're doing is heating and air conditioning the front part up to temperature, so it would be what a typical 2,000-square-foot building would cost to heat and air. We're doing it with a split unit and not doing the rest of the building, just keeping the rest of it like we did last year to 55 degrees, just so that the lines don't freeze.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion on this item? Seeing no lights, we're hearing none. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson?
Yes.
That, the motion passes with nine ayes and one nay. Councilmember Euler. Madam Clerk?
17-277 is a request to approve the use of $50,000 of South Village Tax Increment Financing Funds to create a request for proposal for job training programs.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, during last year budgetary cycle, we appropriated and approved $50,000 to be used for some type of job training program. So, what you see before you today is not a request to approve $50,000. You did that on November 15, 2016. Instead, what you have before you today is a request to approve a job training program, the design of the program. The design of the program, as you will see in the information, is to either benefit an employer that is inside the TIF or benefit those who reside in the TIF, no matter where they work. And last year, when we appropriated the $50,000, it was really just to see if we could get some type of critical mass of training going on to provide people employment. And so, the first $50,000 is a lot of money when you don't have it, but in the greater scheme of things, when you're talking about job training and the number of individuals who reside in the South Village TIF who are underemployed or unemployed, it's really a small amount of money, and I'm hopeful that the results that we will see from this program will bring us back here next year, and from the TIF, we would be able to appropriate a little more from the TIF. As most folks know, and for those of you who don't know, funds that are inside the TIF cannot be used to resolving any of the budget issues that we're talking about. It is specific for a specific purpose. These purposes are defined by the state of Illinois, not by the city of Peoria. And so, tonight, I would ask that you would approve this job training program. If you read the documentation, it indicates that when the application goes out and comes back, there is a group that will be looking at that information, determining based upon the criteria that is determined, is designed, who fits within the category to be awarded, and those awards will have to come before you to approve. So, just because we appropriate, we approve the job training program, we send out the applications, we get the applications back, we look at who met the criteria and make a decision, that's not final. You make the final decision when this comes back to you. So, with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Turner. Thank you. Discussion, Councilman Grab?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Moore, for outlining this program. I just want to be sure I understand this. The eligibility would just be for folks living in the south side tax increment area, correct? And that would be, by the way, I have no problem with that. But that would be legal for us to do it that way. We can't, in other words, we would not be on shaky ground saying, oh, if you're from outside that TIF, you can't take advantage of these programs.
Such a, such a regulation.
This is exciting, and we're talking about job training and helping people get the skills they need to be in the workforce. This is exactly what we should be wanting to do even more of. Thank you, Councilor Moore, for bringing this forward tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ruckregal?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Moore, for your work on this, as well as all city staff. Just a question on timeline, on when you think the RFP proposals would be going out, and kind of what the timeline on those coming back in, and maybe some decision processes, if you have an idea?
I expect the RFP to come out next week. I kind of had staff working on the commercial rehab program that we approved a week ago, so I've had them doing a lot. And in this case, this was the thing that came up last. And while I'm here, I want to say that this came out of, we probably already have three or four organizations who have already come to us looking for funds out of the TIF. And from that point, we decided we needed to design some type of process where everyone who thought that they were eligible could apply, and it takes the subjectivity out of it, and it's more objective.
And for clarification, this is for businesses within six-one-six-oh-six, or, I'm sorry, within the TIF area, or for training programs within the TIF area, but who could train also for outside jobs outside of that TIF area?
That's right. Either the employer is within the narrowed confines of the Village, South Village TIF, or the resident lives in the TIF, and they can work anywhere, but they live in the TIF.
Thank you very much for your work on this.
Did you have another comment? That was it. Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion second for approval. Please cast your ballots. Councilwoman Aikerson.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Item seventeen dash two seventy-eight is a request to receive and file the month ended July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, unaudited financial report.
Councilman Grab?
To approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson? Councilmember Aikerson may be on mute. Or we may have lost her. That motion passes with ten affirmative. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Seventeen dash one-one-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code of the city of Peoria, relating to various text adjustments.
Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Mayor. With discussion with, with staff on seventeen dash one-one-seven, I'd like to be able to move for deferment until the next regularly scheduled council meeting. There's some additional items we'd like to have in this at that time.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any further discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Aikerson? We may have lost Councilmember Aikerson.
I believe we have.
Okay. The motion passes with ten affirmative. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Seventeen dash two forty-six is a request to approve an agreement between the city of Peoria and Bradley University, which sets forth the terms and conditions for customized street name signs around the Bradley campus.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
Yes, and I want to thank my colleague, Councilor Jensen, for wanting us to be sure that we touched base with all the neighborhoods that might have these red and white signs in them. And we did run this past the West Bluff Council, although I had every reason to believe they were on board from previous meetings. They did affirm that they had no objection to it. And then I went to the Uplands picnic on Saturday and had a chance, you know how you drive past something time and again, and you don't really see it. Uplands has some very beautiful decorative signs, and they just wanted to be sure that that would not cause their decorative signs to go away. This is going to be an embellishment in addition to whatever signage that we have currently, for example, on the Main Street side, the Uplands side of this project. Director Reese, the city is incurring a little bit of expense on this, but we do periodically change out our signs. In any case, could you elaborate a little bit about this? I want to be sure that nobody thinks we're being profligate with our money here as it relates to this.
Yes, so all of our signs in the city, the street name signs have reflectivity, and there's certain standards that they have to keep that reflectivity when it's dark, when your headlights hit them, so that you're able to read them. And the UV rays from the sun actually eat that reflectivity down, and so we periodically are on a rotating basis of replacing signs anyways throughout the city.
Maybe these weren't quite ready yet, but they will be on a cycle.
Exactly.
The other thing that I just want to say, and, you know, I guess I'm biased, I am the second district councilman where Bradley University is, but I, we're all proud of Bradley University and the huge economic engine that it is for not only our city, but our region, the academic environment, the speakers they bring in, what they add to our culture, the hundred-million-dollar project that they're now involved in on the hilltop, which is creating lots of jobs. And of course, I can't help but feel really, really excited about the president of Bradley University who came here one night and said, hey, I'm Gary Roberts, president of Bradley University, and we're here to stay. So with that, I would move to approve this. I think this will add to Bradley's iconic branding and keep them on the cutting edge, bringing the best and the brightest to our community, and ensuring that this, one of our top five employers continues to thrive and do well. People know where they are when they are getting close to the campus with these signs. And Bradley right now is having its great homecoming week, and we had the the bee showing up very brightly the other night, the quad. And, you know, we're proud of Bradley University, and I'm glad we touched all the bases on this, Councilor Jensen.
Thank you.
And I guess I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Ruckregal. Is there further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Is there any unfinished business for the council unfinished? Okay, Madam Clerk?
We would be at new business.
New business to come for the council tonight. New business, Councilmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two requests for City Manager Yurk. Thank you for your work on getting us prepared for the budget. You know, it's a lot of extra time on both yourself and staff, and appreciate all of the work ahead of time. In anticipation of that, could we get a report back on our take-home policy for vehicles that are city-owned? What that looks like, what that policy currently looks like, how many vehicles fall underneath that, and an approximate cost to the city on that policy? And second, and I know we kind of talked about this whenever the subject of SSAs come up, could we take a look at what our current policy is on SSAs? If we do have a written policy, and would suggest that we might want to sit down. I think we've had two requests tonight. We may have more in the future. Might be good for us to have a policy section as the council to be able to just review what our SSA policies are kind of for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to first thank all the citizens who attended the third MacArthur Bridge replacement at Valeska Hinton School this past Tuesday, and to Scott Reese and the staff who were there with all the beautiful pictures of what that bridge replacement's gonna look like. It's, as you recall, bridges are perfect when they're one hundred, and that bridge is a six. And so we thought it was prudent to kind of replace it before it decided to replace itself. So thank you to Public Works for all the work that you're doing on that, and the meetings that you're having, and all of that, and all of your staff. Second, I'd like to, in light of the, you know, the resolution that was passed today, the ordinance, excuse me, that was passed that Ms. Jones spoke to, I wanted to remind everyone that this coming Thursday, September the fourteenth, at five-thirty in room four-oh-four, the Advisory Committee on Police and Community Relations meets. This is a commission that meets every single month. It's open to the public. Anyone who might have any kind of concern with, an encounter with our police force can come there and bring compliments as well as suggestions for improvements. And so that's this coming Thursday at five-thirty in room four-oh-four. Third, on this Saturday, on September the sixteenth, happening in somebody else's district, in Glen Oak Park, the Black Expo is having their twenty-first annual Black Expo on September the sixteenth, the Saturday, in Glen Oak Park at the pavilion. And so you're welcome to come out to that. And finally, Mr. City Manager, as it relates to the community conversation, I would like to get a report back on this, in the second meeting in October, as to the results that have come out of all the meetings, all the efforts that have been going on. So folks know that we weren't just sitting there talking to each other, and talking to each other, and we've been talking to each other for a long time. But there was actually some results that came out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Councilman Grab was talking earlier, he referenced the expression, all the good things that are happening in our city. And, you know, with the talk about the budget process, oftentimes, some of those good things get overlooked. Well, I just want to commend Director Black and the entire Community Development Department. They had about twenty staff members out in the East Bluff last week picking up trash. And this was a concentrated effort, following some discussion with the neighborhood groups up there, and really addressing one of the quality of life issues with the litter problem in so many of the neighborhoods. So we, city staff, came out in full force. They looked great in their black t-shirts, worked hard, and we had some great participation from some of the neighbors as well. So there are good things happening, and there's a lot of pride in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other additional new business to come for the council this evening? I'm seeing none. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the City Council.
Thank you. Citizens to address the council. We need your, please give us your name and address for the record, and we try to keep the comments to five minutes or less. Up first is Mr. Valley.
I always get the pleasure to speak first. Good evening, and I hope all is well. I'd really like to take this opportunity to commend the City Council and Councilwoman Denise Moore for the terrific incentives that we're going to have with the job training program and its initiative that's about to take place. It's a long time needed in the south end, and I see some great improvements coming that way. So the work that you are doing to bring job training down into the south end is a much-needed effort. And of course, we're all aware that that effort has to continue throughout the years of bringing additional job training and providing more funding for that. So this is just a good stepping stone to get job training initiatives down there and to get individuals involved in getting their life and their job improvements and training history so that they're able to function and get a livable wage. And so I commend you on making those efforts and getting that project initiated for this, this year. There's so many subjects I'd like to talk about today, and I got less than a couple more minutes to do so. So I'm gonna try to speed dial on a lot of things that I'd like to mention. One of the things is, is our state legislator, legislators, and someone brought to my attention today that we have both Republican and Democrats evenly spread out through all of our offices here locally that serve us as constituents. And one of the things that we have a concern about is with our TIF funding from the state and the rules and regulations that TIF brings down to our local municipalities. I encourage you, as councilmembers, to get in touch with our state legislators to kind of get a more better understanding as to what our state rules are when it comes to TIF funding, how much more added ideas and process that could be put into place with that. It's gonna be a tough conversation, but I'm pretty sure we can pull through. Helping Hand Resource Center has, is proud to announce that we added additional jobs into our, into our area. We are in the process of hiring thirty individuals full-time at a rate of nine-twenty-five an hour with overtime mandatory at RMH Foods located in Morton, Illinois. We hired ten people today, full-time, and they will start on Thursday. And this is a temporary job that will last anywhere from three to six months. This is a possible income of anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars per week home, take-home paycheck. So this is a boost to our local economy here in six-one-six-oh-five, because we will be hiring only from six-one-six-oh-five and oh-four and oh-three. And we encourage employers to work with our community to provide livable wages so that people can provide some future for themselves and for their families. Bringing employment down to six-one-six-oh-five is going to be a venture, because we've got a lot of things that are going on in our, in our district that needs improvement and needs work on. But I am assured, and I am confident to say this, that as a community, we're coming together strong, and we're doing some great things over the past couple years. And I see two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen an inspiration for all of us to stand together as one and to make our great city not just one portion, but the whole portion of our city be strong economically, employment-wise, infrastructure-wise, and family-wise. Crime has dropped eleven percent in six-one-six-oh-five over the last three years, and I commend Police Chief Mitchell for the efforts that the Police Department has done in the south end. And I also commend other organizations that come together and work in our community to help the crime rate drop. I'm sure that most of you are well aware that in two thousand sixteen, the United States spent over forty billion dollars incarcerating individuals. That's a lot of money. And in two thousand sixteen, the state of Illinois spent over seventeen million dollars just in Peoria County alone to process the criminals that come through our justice system. Seventeen million dollars. I'm sure that we can come up with some preventative maintenance to stop young men and women from committing crimes and going to prison. I'm pretty sure that we can continue to advocate unity, stop violence within our neighborhoods. And I'm sure that we'll continue to fight forward and move forward in the making everyone equal in our community, whether they have committed crimes in the past, or whether or not they're black, white, Spanish, Latino, or any other.
Ron, that was five minutes. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Hopkins.
Hello, and good evening. I wanted to invite all of you to an event sponsored by Friends of Riverfront Park. It takes place on Saturday, this Saturday, September sixteenth, two to four p.m. in the park. We're gonna have music, storytelling, activities for children, many interesting events. This is an effort to save the park from those apartments that many of you have voted This is an effort to save the park from those apartments that many of you have voted for erroneously, I feel. A park should never be turned over to private use. This park was paid for by taxpayers. It's been maintained by taxpayers since the nineteen eighties. It deserves to remain as a park, and this event will show you just what this can be used for, as an interesting event to bring the people in the area together. So I invite all of you to come to this, two to four p.m., Saturday, September sixteenth, in Riverfront Park, at the foot of Morton Street near Constitution Garden. Come see the park and what it can be used for, and rethink, if you voted for those apartments, rethink that vote. There's some other votes coming up. Rethink it. It's never good to take away a park from the public. Thank you so much. I'll give a press release to the clerk to be disseminated among you. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Sierra.
Sabino Sierra, seventeen eight, Stanley, in the South Side. I'd like to kind of say, you know, we're talking about getting together with everybody and doing a lot, a lot more, and that's good, you know, but I can tell you now that it, I've seen better days in this community, being that I was born in nineteen thirty-one, and it was a lot more peaceful and everything, not as much hatred either. But what we've, I'd like to remark about is some of these clubs have had their festivals this past month and before. The Italians had their party, I think the Irish had it last week or the week before, they had their Aaron Fest, and the Hispanics had that fiesta on the Rio, on the river. And this, this weekend, fifteenth and sixteenth of September, we commemorate the independence of Mexico. And the, it's written that the Chinese and the Mexican people observe their culture more than anybody other, other race or nationality. And it's good, you know, because, you know, we all say we're all American, you know, we're Americans. Yeah, we're all Americans, and all this hemisphere, you know, even if you're Canadian, you're American. The United States, we use it as a, to, to say, hey, we're Americans, yeah. You Americans don't realize that you were, or you are dependents of different, of different nationalities, but you don't, you know, you don't remember that. And I, by keeping my, my culture and my language, I've been able to help different people in my lifetime, and it's a good feeling, you know, whether I'm here, or on a train, or in a hospital, or even in Europe. When I was, when they sent me to Europe, it was a lot easier, because they sent me to Germany, and in Germany, there was a lot of Spaniards there, that they helped Franco during the Spanish Civil War. So it was a lot easier for me to begin to pick up a few German words, too, because I could, I could speak Spanish to those Spanish people. And also, when the Puerto Ricans, they played them, because they didn't want to take orders from the English-speaking troops, they'd call on me, and I'd give them the order, and they'd, and they'd fulfill it. And so I tell everybody, you know, remember your, what do you call it, simple birth, you know, where you were born, your people that came over to this country at one time or another, and learn from it. And so with that, I'm going to leave you, and I'll see you. Let's go home.
We do not have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks to A. Twain Wilson and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel Twenty-two, tonight's meeting of the Peoria City Council is adjourned.
I think there's more to come, but I think John did a real...